Ms. Nardi. We'll do a pledge of allegiance, thank you. It's a new year, I need to focus there for a second.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Nardi, if you'd be so kind as to do a roll call.
Mr. Durkheim?
Here.
Ms. Gaska?
Here.
Ms. Towner?
Here.
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 Do we have any visitors here for statements? Not seeing any, we can move on to discussion information items, FOIA requests.
We had three FOIAs. The responses are included in the board packet. There were no questions submitted, and all FOIAs have been sent out.
I think there was one question submitted in regards to the hump and ref rates.
Yes.
Oh, correct, I'm sorry.
And those are taking effect this school year.
Okay. Thank you.
And we use those through the IHSA schedule, correct?
Correct, we do not actually set those rates.
I just thought it was a December release of the rates, so obviously we had not budgeted for them previously, but they're not significant to a point of materiality. Okay. Any additional discussion items from anyone here on the board? Looking around. Okay, moving on to consent agenda, approval of minutes. I would ask the board's indulgence that we defer on this item. We have some other closed minutes to discuss later on this evening. Would just like to postpone our approval of these particular minutes. Any objections? Okay. Moving on to old business, action items, life safety, and then multi-function school and activity bus.
No update on the life safety capital improvement items. We are completed, our railings have been completed, the pavers were installed over Thanksgiving break. So I don't think we have any large items that are left, all small items that are being done internally, correct?
Correct.
Kristen, you want to take the activity bus?
Sure, this is a second read of the activity bus. Nothing has changed from the last round, except for the fact I was able to get a reduced price on the two-year lease of the new bus, which brought it down about $1,000, so it's $18,333 a year. I'm asking for approval tonight because we need approval by the board in order to get on the list, and they're filling orders based on the order in which people submit their request.
Okay. Multi-function school and activity bus, mini-bus lease. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the two-year lease agreement with Midwest Transit for $36,873 a year, pending final review by legal counsel and the superintendent as presented in the January 11, 2022 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
You have a second from Mr. Welch. We can give a roll call, please.
Mr. Durkheim?
Yes.
Ms. Gaska?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Vunpor?
Yes.
Ms. Welch?
Yes.
Yes. Next item is the press-plus policy issue. This is the second read of these items. Dr. Stinkus?
Well, I want to first of all thank Ms. Ruska and Ms. Towner. We met for over two hours, close to two and a half hours, to go through this hefty packet. The ones where you see there were some changes, those are what the, in the packet, and we also addressed the 2:140, 202, 2:230. I only received minimal questions from Ms. Dalis, and those are more minor editorial comments, like changing British Home to Kentada. I am waiting to hear back from legal counsel on 7:315, which was the student publication. There is a clause in there, we align with some of the updates to the Public Act and the student media, but at the same time, there's an opportunity to address some language where I think we can reach some middle ground to where if there is a concern with something that's being written in one of the student publications, how it can be addressed by the administration. So it's covered in the policy, but there was one option, and the language, the policy council had some concerns with the language. The sponsor would like to see something similar to that language put in, so if we were going to approve the packet tonight, maybe we can pull 7:315 out of that, or we keep the whole packet in and approve it as a consent item next board meeting. The other policy, 4:165, I did follow up and get updates and made some edits to that from, that's a new policy from IASB, and it does align with the Public Act, so the things that were left in there are things that are required to be left in there. I sent that to the policy council earlier. And we also addressed 2:230, which was public comments, and legal counsel tweaked that a little bit too. I know you saw the recent article in the Landmark in regards to their policy, they wrote a story on LT's policy and the removal of a community member from a meeting, so I just wanted to make sure our policy was fluid and provided protections for the board and the administration, but also allowed people to properly voice their First Amendment rights at a public meeting. And so all those changes have been made, I'm just waiting to hear back on the 7:315, so I could defer that to the board on how you would like to proceed, whether we pull one policy, or if you'd like to hold the packet and approve it as a consent item next week, or next meeting.
So my suggestion is, well, let's just confirm and see if there's any additional comments on the policies. My preference would certainly be to move ahead, there's so many of these, and they require updates to documents, if we could move ahead with all of them, with the exception of 7:3.7:315, that's my preference, but I'll open it up if anyone has any thoughts on this.
Well, because they have four, what is it, the 4.1.7?
4:165.
Because that's a new policy, and we did get quite, you know, we got legal counsel on that, you might want to include that with 7, just to give people a chance to mull it over, just want, you know, because that is new.
Okay, now, I'm comfortable with that. Any objections from anyone?
4:165?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
What page is that on?
Oh, wait, let's see.
Because it goes from 4:120 to 4:160.
Oh, 117, I can't believe I clicked on it.
That's the policy, but I think he's asking for the specific policy.
What's the actual policy number?
4165 is on Board Book Page 117.
I'm not looking at the full Board Book, so I need to scroll down a little.
4165?
416, 4:165 is on regular Board Book 117.
But I think Ms. Ruska's suggestion is solid, we can take that one as well as 7315 out of order and approve the remainder.
Because it was, it's all new, and we did get substantial.
Just to provide some extra time.
Yeah. I would go with that.
Any concerns on the remainder? Yeah.
Claire and Elena, did you guys have any specific concerns on the policies?
I, during Clarion, I read over the restrictions on publications. I, I don't think we, I don't know what the real, the question, like just revising that policy, but I don't, are you, so you're talking about the clause, because I know we have the independent, I don't know what the right language is, but the thing where the administration can intervene if there's something being published?
So that's one of the policies we would hold off for some, some type of additional wordsmithing. There were two options offered, and I think there's probably some middle ground, and it's with the advisor, and I think we'd want counsel to look at it as well.
Yeah, I think that is a good idea, just because it, and something involved so much with the language, that it'd be important to get it right.
No questions from me. Okay, thanks.
And counsel has, we've asked counsel write about the Student Mental Health Day policy?
Yep.
So that's all good to go?
Yes.
Thank you.
Which is the publication policy, which one is that numbered?
7:315.
Oh, okay.
I'm not finding 4:165.
I'm not finding 4:165.
Are we sure that's the correct number on that one, Laura?
It's at the beginning.
Yeah, it's at the beginning.
It's at the very beginning.
The reason it's going to be at the beginning.
It's on Page 117?
I should have prefaced this with the board. The reason it's at the beginning is all the ones that we made changes to committee.
Independent of press packet.
Press packet are at the front, that's why it's, that's why it's not in order.
Thank you.
That was confusing, thank you.
So, yeah, it's right after the motion.
Yeah, all of this is shifted digital, and historically, this was something that Laura and I talked about. Historically, this used to be a chart, and then you would just go through the chart and highlight, but now it's all digital, so any ones that we made additional edits to are listed in the front. So that's actually the first policy, that's why it's on Board Book Page 117.
Okay, understood. So I, I think what I'm hearing is that we don't have any additional discussion on the rest, so Mona will have to modify the.
Yeah, so I'll read it as adopt press policy issue 108, excluding the two, and then?
Correct, 7:315 and 4:165.
Okay. All right, are we ready? Press-plus policy issue 108. By the way, 108 is like the biggest one they've ever put out, so it was a lot. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves press-plus policy issue 108, excluding policy 7:315 and policy 4:165, and the additional three policies included as presented in the January 11, 2022 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
This is an all in favor, because there's no money.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Thank you very much, I think to everyone who worked on this, that's a lot of lifting. Dr. Stinkus, could I ask you though, just to clarify one point, I know you and I talked about this, the new training for board members, that it will be a requirement?
It will be a requirement for all board members, effective July 1/23, I believe it says, 2023, or January 1/23.
What training?
Thank you.
Training of?
grooming and sexual harassment and.
2:120.
Many of the edits in this press-plus packet were due to some new laws on the books regarding awareness and prevention of sexual, child sexual abuse and grooming behavior. So.
And that'll be a training that will get.
Yeah, I'll coordinate that with legal, or if it's a video or something of that nature, GCN video where you have to answer a few questions, similar to your school board training.
Thank you. That was actually a fairly quick discussion, so thank you, everyone. Can you move on to the, to the school calendar for 2022, 2023?
Okay, so the school calendar 2022, 2023, give me one second to get through this 300 pages of policy.
Mary Ann, what page are you on now?
315. See, that's why I only pull them up one at a time, but I'll do the full deck.
So this is a second review of the calendar, and I think we're ready for approval for this year's calendar. I have had some discussions with the union for the future, trying to look about possibly putting an institute after break. I think because this has been shared, this was shared with the union earlier, and with the feeder schools, we did get some feedback late before winter break from the ICs about possibly shifting that, and that's something I think we can easily do in the future, but I think we're going to need a little more planning on which institute day and how that shakes out. It also doesn't necessarily align with the schedule for next year, as we're not coming back to school till Monday, January 9, because we have an extended break last year. Obviously, this year, it would have been nice to have an institute day on January 3, so teachers, because, you know, kind of fell right after the holiday. So that's something I can work on, and that's just something that you might see in the future, but other than that, I think this calendar is ready to approve. And it does include the Juneteenth holiday, as well as, remember every other year, unless this law changes, the general election, so that's an additional day off. That's why some years we have 175, and some years we have 176.
Yeah, but Election Day and the Juneteenth are state mandated days off.
Correct, I don't see Juneteenth changing, but I don't know going forward if the Election Day will remain, it was only for two years.
Well, I mean, many of these are state mandated days off, those are just new ones for this year.
Was Pulaski Day a state mandated one?
No.
No.
Is the city one?
It is a state.
The city that was adopted around the collar counties for quite a while.
It is a state holiday, but it is not a state-acquired holiday.
We haven't had Pulaski Day for several years here, and we do a little, and it's similar to Hutter, we do a little thing over the announcements.
And Juneteenth, only your 12-monthers and your office staff will be off, that doesn't affect student attendance, correct?
Correct. The government, the general election does though, Election Day.
I mean, it could, would it affect summer school?
Summer school.
One day?
Summer school.
Yeah.
So do we want to go ahead and make a motion to approve these this evening?
We do.
Sure, okay.
I have a question regarding April 7. It's listed as Good Friday, are we?
It's not listed, we just, we listed it there, so you know it's.
So we know why.
Right, but we just put district closed on the actual calendar.
Yeah, when you turn that into the state.
When you go to the, the actual calendar, Ryan, it just says district closed, correct.
Just curious why it was written, I mean, many districts do that.
I believe the CBA might actually reference it that way still.
Does it?
Maybe don't quote me on that, but that is a distinct possibility.
Okay, the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby adopts the 2022, 2023 school calendar, providing for the opening day of school on Monday, August 15, 2022, the ending day of school on Thursday, May 25, 2023, for a total school term of 185 days, as presented in the January 11, 2022 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Any objections? School calendar for next year passes, thank you.
Start making your travel plans.
Payment of bills under new business.
There was one question submitted on Board Book Page 361 regarding cellphone reimbursement for administrators. So administrators can submit a payment, a bill, and we would reimburse them for their cellphone payment up to $60 a month, and as you see, some administrators submit, await and submit several months at a time.
So that's a four-month bill?
Yes, that is a four-month bill, so it says August through November, and in the business office, we keep track since everyone seems to submit on their own timeline to make sure that nobody double submits.
And this option was provided because some of our, over time, what we've realized is, instead of putting lines on the administrative account with Horizon, some families or some of the administrators had family accounts already with their families and their kids, so it was easier just to come up. Several years ago, we'd figured out like kind of what the average administrator bill was, and then we gave almost like a reimbursable stipend, as long as they submit their bill.
Were there any other questions on those? No, you want me to read the?
That was the only one I submitted.
Okay, I don't think there's any other questions, if you'd be so kind, Ms. Towner?
Okay. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the payment of bills as presented in the January 11, 2022 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Vunpor?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Durkheim?
Yes.
Ms. Gaska?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Ms. Vunpor?
Yes. Historic property resolution? You're betting on this, is it?
Yeah, this is just a formality, this is something that the board has been adopting annually since the 80s, and this is just to ensure that we still can get the required property taxes for any historic buildings in the district.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the historic property resolution that certain assessment relief provided by the Illinois Property Tax Code for historic buildings not applied to taxes that are levied by the Board of Education of School District 208 as presented in the January 11, 2022 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Do we have any questions or comments on this matter?
We don't have to read the big resolution?
No, we do, we do not.
Thankfully.
Ms. Nardi, would you take the roll, please?
Mr. Vunpor?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Durkheim?
Yes.
Ms. Gaska?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Dalis?
Yes. The next new item are the district goals. So these were, Ms. Nardi was good enough to run copies, she should have a paper copy at everyone's place. These were the goals we discussed at our December 11 session with IASB. There were some minor edits suggested. Our next step, based on our December 11 discussion, would be to ask the administration to post these for public comment over a two-week period, I think we had talked about generally. So I cannot, I would open it up to the board at this point, any additional edits, any additional comments, or are we comfortable moving forward to seek public comment?
Yeah, mine, mine is not about that, I just wanted to, I, I think I sent an email to the board, but I just wanted to say, like, everything that we have been getting on this topic via email, I continue to put in the shared drive in Google, so that you don't have to look for the last email.
Thank you.
So if you want to double-check anything, or refer back to anything, you should be able to find everything in that Google shared drive, so.
Thank you, that is much appreciated. Well, I will read these out, just for the record, I think that's helpful to anyone viewing.
Yeah, I think that's helpful, thank you.
So again, these were based on our retreat we had on December 11. These are focused around the main pillars of IASB's governance guidance, so starting from the top, number one, explore how to maximize curricular days to provide for new opportunities and social emotional supports for all students. Number two, research opportunities and methods to increase two-way engagement with all stakeholders of the RBHS community. Number three, ongoing training and engagement in diversity, equity, and inclusion work. Number four, responsible budgeting and investment in staff and programs that directly affect student outcomes. Number five, I did have an alternative here. From our discussion in December, it was increased physical footprint in order to support district operations, curricular and extracurricular utilization. For the group tonight, I did suggest the following, so as not to overemphasize the word increase, this was, that was where I was coming from. So the suggested alternative was review physical footprint to maximize support of district operations, including curricular and extracurricular utilization.
Can you read it one more time?
Review physical footprint to maximize support of district operations, including curricular and extracurricular utilization.
So I just, just from the board's perspective, maybe we can talk a little bit about number five, which one they prefer, so that when I post these to the stakeholder group and the general public for feedback, I know which one to put for five.
Thank you.
I prefer the revision, I read it in the same way, I actually read the seven-page document and thought, where are the goals, because everything we had done that day got distilled into this. That being said, I really struggled with that initial phrasing, I like the review, the edit far better, because it sounds like we're desperate in the other one. I think understanding where we are and where we need to put our focus is probably better worded in that second one, in the edit, or the revision.
Does the suggested alternative actually mean we want to increase the physical footprint?
I did not take it to be committed to increasing the physical footprint. I think there's, there's been some regular ongoing debate, I think there's certainly a desire to increase the physical footprint, but that may not ultimately be an achievable goal, so I think that needs to be part of the, of the dialogue. So I intentionally backed away from using the word increase the footprint. But what are your thoughts, Mike?
I thought it was a good discussion on that Saturday, I thought we, I thought we agreed that we wanted to do something in the parking area.
I personally think we are, but knowing where we are with our current utilization is probably a first step to moving toward that second goal, but the second goal is, I wouldn't say out of our control, but right now, perhaps beyond our control at the moment. So I think reviewing where we are is probably the place that mentally I am. Knowing what we have and how we're utilizing it, you know, what are the current concerns among staff, administration, and students that is impacting their ability to perform academic and extracurricular activities?
Well, I mean, I guess I would suggest that there's a fairly widespread agreement that we would want more space to do some of the sports activities, the other extracurriculars that right now get moved to off-site locations, and not to put too fine a point on it, but my concern was that we set a goal that says increase the physical footprint, and that's somehow pass or fail on increasing the physical footprint. I think we need to be open to understanding that if we don't ultimately, we are not ultimately able to increase the footprint, what does that look like? So that's, we're saying the same thing, but slightly differently.
So is there a way we can capture language where, while we're reviewing that physical footprint, that we are open to opportunities to increase if they avail themselves? I mean, you're the wordsmither, but you know, that if an opportunity presented itself and it was within our reach, that would be something we?
I guess we set aside money with the intent that we will be purchasing some form of expansion. I think, again, I don't find this to be the major consequence, although it will direct our efforts.
So where does the community fit in, in this, in this new one?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I don't understand your point.
Like, the community wants us to help them have access to this building, and that's why we put the money aside, right?
So I'm not talking about how we, we get to anything, this was just, and if we're not comfortable moving forward, we're not comfortable moving forward with the suggested alternative.
Would that be under district operations, then?
Yes, this is, this is simply on goal number five about our facilities, and I was really attempting to address the emphasis on increasing our physical footprint. With the suggested alternative language.
The increase, right? I mean, I do like review, but then how do we include, like, review and be open to possibilities, or something like that?
What if we just dropped in like review, review opportunities, or review all avenues to increase the physical foot, like, I get what you're saying, we don't want to say that we're bound to physical, because if you, if we can't make a deal with the zoo.
Right, I'm just saying, how do we, like, how do you say, and be open to the opportunities as they avail themselves?
How about review physical footprint and?
Identify avenues to?
Identify opportunities for expansion.
Identify opportunities as they present themselves, or something like that, I mean, because we.
We could work Smith there. But I think we need to take a little bit of what's, I think what I'm hearing is we got to take a little bit from the top that came out of that Saturday, and tweak it into your suggested alternative.
Yeah, I'm okay with it, as long as, you know, I have to think about that, what, the original goal was, I'm just trying to make sure it fits in this, in the suggested alternative.
I mean, you can always, like, it's a goal, if, I mean, if we, if we've worked as hard as it, at it as we can, and we've exhausted all possibilities, and we don't meet the goal, it doesn't mean we failed, right? Like, it's a goal, it's not, like, we're not going to be in front of a firing squad if we don't get there.
We could say advocate to increase the physical footprint, because I get, I get the staying away from the word increase, but I also think that just saying review is just too laid back.
Okay.
Like, we've already set aside $2.9 million.
Right, so maybe.
We're not playing around.
I think that's actually a really good suggestion, advocate to increase physical footprint in order to support district operations, curricular, and extracurricular utilization. Is everyone comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Because I think, that addresses my concern, is that was just me, me attempting to find an alternative, but I think.
Well, I know, because ultimately, it's not up to us, it's up to whoever wants to play ball with us. But, but on our end, the most we could do is to advocate, to negotiate, to, you know, whatever.
Right, we should show that we're serious.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're already past kind of like the review stage.
We're done.
We know we need to do something.
Okay, right, that's fair.
So I take those, all those ideas and Smith it into something new, and I will, I will accept that.
Okay, now, I think all we did, I think Ms. Gaska found a great solution, we're just adding two words to the front of five as drafted on 12/11. So advocate to increase physical footprint in order to support district operations, curricular, and extracurricular utilization. And keep in mind, these will now be in the public purview for a few weeks, so we may have some.
I would like to advocate to the public, please give us your feedback on these, tell us what you would like to see, so that we have some sense, and it's not just the eight of us in a room.
You know, I do have a question on three, the word, and Lorena, to, welcome your input on that. You know, to me, where it says ongoing training and engagement, diversity, equity, equity, inclusion, that seems like enough, but that word work just seems dangling to me. I don't, the work doesn't add anything to that word work, because we want ongoing training and engagement in diversity. Diversity is, you know, the noun, diversity in everything we do, in equity and inclusion, but is diversity work a specific thing, or is equity work a specific thing? So that word work is just odd.
I had, I had circled that as well.
Do we need the word work?
No. I don't think so.
I, I think Deanna submitted a change on the strike of the continue. I, I agree, it didn't make sense, continue and ongoing. I don't know.
No, she's asking about the word work at the end of DEI, work, so.
Because I just think that we should be diversity in everything we, you know, look at diversity in everything we do through that lens, and equity and, like, that should be the lens and.
So I think commonly, like, there's like, there's, there's a bucket of work considered equity work, or inclusion work, or diversity work, right? There's, that's, I think, a common way to refer to those buckets of, of activity.
But I thought our conversation was, we want to get away from the bucket and get away from having diversity as a small piece and start using diversity as the filter for everything that we do. Not a portion or a piece, but, you know, even like our conversation with the policies, you know, Kevin brought up, everything that's for that five-year review, we need to now start filtering it through, really being intentional, and looking through that diversity lens and equity lens.
So you're suggesting strike the word work?
Yeah, because I think it should be in everything we do.
Any objections to that?
Can I make one other, oh, I'm sorry, take your straw.
Lori, am I, am I?
I see what you're saying. I mean, I, we could say ongoing training and engagement in diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts, or DEI training, DEI, I mean, I, I think I know what you're getting at with work, but I think we do need to add something. So just, and DEI matters, and DEI training.
So my suggestion is, perhaps we let this out for public comment and get some feedback. I don't think we're looking to finalize and finish these off this evening.
I personally feel that the work word does the work, but it's, I don't think there's an end goal when it comes to achievement of diversity, equity, or inclusion. It's going to be continuous work. So I, I guess I see it as, as an important part of it, but again, I'm not led to it.
One thing for consistency purposes, if you notice, we have, we're probably lacking a verb in four and in three. Like, we have explore, research, advocate. So we probably should do something like for three that says, support ongoing training and engagement in diversity, equity, inclusion for all stakeholders. Maybe something like that.
This is the verbiage we got back from Lori, correct?
Right, but this is first draft. The board was supposed to submit, the only comments we got were from Ramona and Deanna, so. But I think even for, so for like three, maybe, you know, if it was a board goal, the board goal would be supporting ongoing training, and then maybe we drop in for all stakeholders instead of work, just so that it's for staff, students.
Yeah.
Right? We need to train everybody on diversity.
Support is your, is your action.
I, I was just my first suggestion, but you hear what I'm saying? Like, we have explore, research, support, and then even for four, responsible budgeting, it may be implement responsible budgeting and investment in staff, you know what I mean? Just something that, so we're consistent all the way down.
I like that.
Know if implements the right word.
Those are active goals, you know, it means that we can't be passive. I like that kind of focus on having a verb in front of the goal.
I don't know if it should be conduct responsible budgeting and investment, implement, I don't know.
How about I read them through one more time, and then, again, this will be out there for, in the, in the public space. I think everyone can wordsmith a little bit more, and we can have, once we get some additional feedback, we can really pinpoint the, the language we want to adopt as our goals. So the first goal would be explore how to maximize curricular days to provide for new opportunities and social emotional supports for all students. Second goal, research opportunities and methods to increase two-way engagement with all stakeholders of the RBHS community. Third goal, support ongoing training and engagement in diversity, equity, and inclusion. Fourth goal, implement responsible budgeting and investment in staff and programs that directly affect student outcomes, outcomes, excuse me. And fifth goal, advocate to increase physical footprint in order to support district operations, curricular, and extracurricular utilization. So is everyone comfortable with putting those out there? Do we want to tweak them further tonight, or are you okay?
The only concern I have is when we say implement responsible budgeting, it makes it sound like we currently don't have responsible budgeting in place.
But, but I, I would disagree on that. I think all of these are goals, and they're, in some ways, they're current goals, right? It's our goal annually to, to responsibly budget. I would suggest that currently there's research about opportunities to increase engagement and that kind of thing, but these aren't going to start from scratch. They're on a continuum to some extent. Do you have an alternative to implement, though, that you think would be better?
Just because it's going to be out in the general public. We just need to, you know.
Continue with.
Continue to implement, continue to, yes.
Continue responsible budgeting and investment in staff, but, you know, one way to say we're trying to increase the investment in staff and student programming.
Maintain, maintain responsible?
I like that.
I mean, because I think, I think maintaining a balanced budget, maintaining budget or spending within our means has been a priority for many years. Spending within our means.
So it's maintain responsible budgeting and investment in staff, et cetera? Does that work?
I think so, yeah.
Good suggestion. Okay, I have.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
So we're going with maintain as our verb in number four.
And, and we may hear some.
Feedback. Okay. That will send us directly to the stakeholder group that participated in the original workshop as well as posted on the board tab of the website.
Thank you. Thank you. And actually, if we could perhaps lean on our student advisors, if you have different ways to make sure there's feedback from students, I think we'd like to see that as well.
Yeah, I think putting it out in an email during school and having teachers say something about it, honestly, for something that students might not be as interested in, honestly, that's the easiest way to get to them during class, because everybody's here.
I agree with making an announcement during a class period, have teachers talk about it during class.
After you, we'll talk about how you can address that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just pace with Claire and Elia.
I will edit what I said about the word work now that you put support in front of it, and say that I don't think the work is.
One less edit, one less unanimous edit you need to do from a hotline. Visitor statements, I don't believe we have any additional visitor statements. We did not have any additional discussion items identified by board members. Consideration of items for future meetings. Is there anything top of mind for anyone? Then we can move on to matters for closed session.
Before we go into closed session, are we, what's the plan with the open meeting minutes we didn't approve, in the closed meeting minutes? What's, what's the plan?
My, my request was to defer those to the next meeting.
Oh, to the next meeting?
Mm-hmm. Not, not to later on. I, I thank you for the clarification.
Thought you wanted to talk about.
At the end.
The closed one, at the end or in closed session? Just move them one.
Yeah, just move to the next meeting.
Gotcha, thank you.
And if I wasn't clear on that, I apologize.
No, it could be me.
Okay, we ready? The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, student, discipline, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable, imminent, or pending litigation, collective negotiation, school safety, and confidentiality of closed session minutes.
I'll second, but I'll, I'd like to push it back to the president because I kind of interrupted her. She was gonna list some things or say some things, and I might have interrupted you.
No, you did not. You did not. Please, please go ahead and proceed with your second.
I did the second.
Okay.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Durkbaum?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Raska?
Yes.
Alma?
Yes.
Budhor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.